Calling to order the Monday, January 4th, 2016, regular meeting of the Thirty-Sixth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Councilmember Kadakel?
Here.
Councilmember Steadman?
Here.
Councilmember Terbrack?
Here.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. Now, the first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve with one correction, that regular agenda item number three should be a motion number M-0116.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Support moved by Mayor Pro Tem Baker, with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we come to the Citizens' Commons portion of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the form provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, Council. My name is Douglas Steeds. Most of you know who I am. For those people that don't know, I run the beautification -- well, I help run the beautification committee. I also do the community garden. I teach gardening in three elementary schools, one middle school, and the high school. We're looking for gardeners. We'd like to -- if you were interested in making the City of Berkeley a better-looking community, please call me. My number is (248) 217-5828. Because I feel that Berkeley needs a little more help. There's only five of us in the beautification committee, and we're doing a good job, but it's a little too slow. We need people to help plan, plant, and maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Spoucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular Thirty-Sixth City Council meeting on Monday, December 21st, 2015. Ordinance number 00715. Matter of adopting the second reading of an ordinance to amend Section 58-40 of Chapter 58 Garbage, Rubbish, and Refuse. Article 2, Collection and Disposal of the Berkeley City Code, to modify regulations that prohibit scavenging of garbage, rubbish, and discarded items, and to designate violations as municipal, civil infractions. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for ten days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Steadman, with support by Councilmember Edgar. Any corrections, changes? Hearing none. Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions, Presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none thus far, then Ms. Spoucher, would you move on to number two, please?
Discussion. Matter of discussing the impact of Senate Bill 13 and Senate Bill 571 and a proposed resolution from City Council on the matter.
Is there a motion to discuss the Senate Bill 13 and 571?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadakel, with support by Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As councilmembers know, there has been some media attention, and we did touch base, I think at our last meeting before the holidays, about these bills, at least Senate Bill 571. These are two bills that were enacted by the Michigan Legislature shortly before the holidays last month. And what they do, what Senate Bill 13 would do, is that's the bill that you may have read about in the news whereby it would, if it's signed into law by the governor, and it has been submitted to the governor, it would eliminate the ability to vote a straight party ticket in Michigan. I think most of us, been voting for a while, are accustomed to being able to go in and vote the straight party ticket, or to vote for the individual candidates. What this bill would do, if adopted, is eliminate that ability to vote on a party ticket and have to go through and vote for the candidates individually. Senate Bill 571 also affects elections, but in a different way. What Senate Bill 571 would do, and the reason that it's of critical concern to government agencies like the City of Berkeley, is that it will flat-out, if it's signed into law by the governor, it will flat-out prohibit this council, or any public official on behalf of the city, for a period of sixty days prior to an election, saying anything, anything at all, about an issue that's coming up on the ballot. And as council knows, the ability to provide public education, explaining what the ballot questions are, whether they're to vote on a charter amendment, like we just had at the last election, whether it's for millage questions, or any other subject, the ability to present information to the public in a fair, impartial, objective, factual way, just to get the facts out there so that people understand it, is really essential to having an informed public in being able to make a decision beyond just reading what's usually two or three sentences in a ballot question. So this would be a very major change. The Michigan Campaign Finance Act, for many, many years, has prohibited the use of public resources to advocate for or against any particular candidate or issue. And there's no problem there, and the reason for that is fairly obvious. But it's been a longstanding tradition in Berkeley, and really throughout the state, again, to be able to put out and use forms like council meetings to explain to the public, again, in an objective, fair, balanced way, what the facts are, what this is all about, why this question is being presented to the voters, what are the reasons for it. If SB 571 passes, you will not be able to do that, at least for a period sixty days prior to the election, which I suspect is when probably ninety-nine percent of the voters form their opinion and start becoming knowledgeable about the ballot questions. So what you have before you tonight is a proposed resolution for your consideration, which if you adopted in the form presented, would be passed and directed to the governor and state legislators expressing the Berkeley City Council's opposition to both bills, as well as urging the governor to veto them.
Very good. Thank you. In order for our residents at home to know exactly what we're talking about, I'm going to ask Councilmember Terbrack to read the proposed resolution for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, stating its staunch opposition to Senate Bill 13 and Senate Bill 571. Whereas the Michigan Legislature has recently enacted and submitted to the governor Senate Bills 13 and 571, and whereas both enactments will have detrimental and unintended negative consequences on the City of Berkeley and its citizens, and whereas local and state government should empower its citizenry to take part in the democratic process, not suppress or disenfranchise its citizens, and whereas subversive legislation such as SB 13, which is designed specifically to suppress and disenfranchise voters in targeted communities, is a betrayal of our core democratic principles, and whereas similar legislation was enacted in 1964 and 2001, and both times, Michigan voters have overturned such legislation by voter referendum, and the attempt to make this pending legislation referendum-proof is a further attempt to silence the voice of the people. And whereas contrary to the stated goal of this bill is to increase voter participation, the Berkeley City Council is concerned that this bill will have the opposite effect and serve to decrease voter participation by increasing wait times and increasing voter frustration at the polls, as well as increasing the burden and cost of conducting elections. And whereas the Berkeley City Council is also opposed to the enactment of Senate Bill 571, which states that a person acting for a public body shall not, during the period sixty days before an election in which a local ballot question appears on a ballot, use public funds or resources for communication by means of radio, television, mass mailing, or prerecorded telephone message if that communication references a local ballot question and is targeted to the relevant electorate where the local ballot question appears on the ballot. And whereas this language is redundant to the current language in the Michigan Campaign Finance Act that already prohibits a public body from using public resources to advocate for or against any ballot measure, and communities across Michigan for the past twenty years have relied upon guidance and rulings from the Bureau of Elections on this exact issue. And whereas the new language bans the use of public resources to communicate by radio and television, such programming includes coverage of city council meetings, video communication from the mayor, and includes a broadcast of a voter forum or debate. And whereas new terms introduced in this proposal are undefined within the act, and will lead to needless confusion and litigation, and the language creates an inconsistency between how information can be shared on state ballot questions as opposed to local ballot questions. And whereas residents of the City of Berkeley and throughout the state rely on objective, balanced, factual, and educational information and communications allowed under existing law that are extremely relevant and provide guidance in the time period near an election to ensure that voters are not confused and are informed on the critical decisions before them. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Berkeley strongly urges the governor to veto Senate Bills 13 and 571. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution shall be expeditiously transmitted to Governor Rick Snyder, Representative Robert Wittenberg, Senator Marty Nolenberg, SEMCOG, the Michigan Municipal League, the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, the Michigan Association of County Clerks, the Oakland County Clerks Association, Speaker of the House Kevin Carter, House Minority Leader Tim Greimel, Senate Majority Leader Arlen Meekeff, Senate Minority Leader Jim Ananik, the Chair and Vice Chairs of the Senate Committee on Elections and Government Reform, and the Chair and Vice Chairs of the House Committee on Elections. And be it further resolved that the Berkeley City Council further urges the state legislature to tackle more pressing election issues aimed at enhancing the election process and increasing access to the voting booth by implementing such measures as no reason absentee voting. And be it finally resolved that the Berkeley City Council states its staunch opposition to Senate Bill 13, Senate Bill 571, and any other bills aimed at discouraging or lowering voter turnout and unduly limiting voter education efforts. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, January 4th, 2016, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. This is a really important issue for us as a community, and also actually for our school district, who are bound by the same constraints. This comes from Lansing, from people who can't find time or a way to fix the roads, but they can create these kinds of constraints. They come also in a long line of efforts to repress the vote. Our Constitution was established by the people, not the states. President Abraham Lincoln put it nicely. We have a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And therefore, to my mind, efforts to repress the people's vote by manipulation will have an adverse effect on the voice of the people. In the last election, 2014, we have thirty-eight senators in Lansing. All seats were up. One party secured fifty-point-four percent of the vote. How many seats do you think they got out of the thirty-eight? They got twenty-seven, and the party that was just a hair below the fifty percent got eleven. Does that seem like equal representation for the voter? If you vote for one particular party, a candidate of one particular party, your vote will be equal to one-point-four-one of a vote. If you vote for a candidate of another party, your vote will equal point-five-nine. Simple mathematics. So it is time, then, that we, as a community, advocate for equality, that our voice matters. And this effort is simply to protect a piece of that, that we are able to talk about the issues that come before us as a community, and educate and make available to the community the facts of whatever proposals come before us. So I'm very much supportive of the resolution that Councilmember Terbrack read for us, and I'm open to any additional conversation about the matter. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Having worked on a number of elections, both with the school district and with the city, and having seen bond issues passed and millages passed, and people come up to you and said, "Well, you snuck another one by us. We didn't know what you were doing."
Yes.
And at that point, we had had many, many forums to educate people. Now, if they say that, if this passes, it'll be absolutely true, because we have no way of talking to them. More than sixty days out, they don't care, and during the window of sixty days up to the election, when they care, we can't say anything. In fact, sitting up here, we could not discuss the election because we're on TV.
Correct.
In theory, the League of Women Voters could not have their forum here and have it broadcast. We don't know how far this goes, because we can't understand the words that are in this legislation. They're not well-defined, and I'm talking primarily about 571 now.
Right.
It's very confusing. So we don't know what the ramifications will be. It's going to be very serious, and I'm very concerned about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Terbrack?
Thank you. To further what my colleague just mentioned, that's one of the scariest parts for me, is the ambiguity in this. We've seen in the past, in recent past, actually, a number of things get passed in Lansing, passed down to us, and then it's incumbent on us to try to figure out how then to legislate these things. Well, with this sort of thing, I mean, I'm not entirely sure what the reach is going to be. There could be a number of things that then fall under this, and all of them, as far as I'm concerned, are only going to hurt the voters, hurt the residents. I mean, if we can't have, you know, in every election that we have here, then there's an election, we have League of Women Voters, just one thing, where candidates all come in and they can ask, get asked questions by the residents of the city, and they can be answered. That wouldn't be allowed, at least not about any ballot issues. You could ask them what their favorite color is, I suppose, or other things, but not the important issues that really matter to the voters. This past election, we had a ballot issue. None of that would have been able to, had been talked about for two months before. We had enough confusion as it was. I am very concerned that there are intended consequences of this that are very intentional, that we don't know, and we won't know until it's signed and until they come down. It doesn't make any sense to me why we would ever try to suppress what you can tell the residents sixty days before an election. This makes absolutely no sense, no sense whatsoever.
Thank you. And just, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor, both for this opportunity to comment, but also for your leadership in helping state very eloquently our position on this really important matter. I think my colleagues have spoken very well about the specific concerns with this legislation, but the comment about trying to slip one by, sneak one by, kind of perked my attention a little bit. I'd like to ask the attorney, if I may, if you could describe a little bit of the process by which some of this language was interjected at the eleventh hour. Are you aware of some of the?
I'm aware of some of it. I don't know the detail, but Senate Bill 571, and the particular language we're talking about, is actually part of, I think it's a fifty-plus-page piece of legislation which was intended to revise the Michigan Campaign Finance Act, but really more technical and housekeeping types of amendments. And my understanding is very, very, very late in the deliberations. This additional provision was introduced and presented, and with no discussion, was tacked on to the Senate bill that was ultimately adopted. So it was one of those, you know, what we like to say, flying under the radar and completely unanticipated, and it was only after the fact, after it had actually been enacted by the state legislature, that the word got out, thank goodness for Michigan Municipal League, and MLive, and some of the other reporting agencies that put it out there, but only after the fact. So it gave absolutely no opportunity for the Michigan Municipal League, or any representatives from your point of view, to provide any testimony or any input whatsoever prior to the legislation. It's more or less just what Councilmember Blanchard was talking about. You snuck one by us without us even knowing about.
It's the last paragraph of a fifty-three-page bill, of which forty pages are amendments.
That's right.
If I may, thank you for that additional context, because as I think about, you know, these particular items here that we're talking about, there's an environment, there's a context within which these kinds of things happen, and the pattern of establishing this kind of, you know, last-minute, sneak-it-in kind of thing is troublesome, specifically with these particular items that affect us principally at the local level, but across many things having to do with budget and many other items. And I would just simply like to mention that this, I'm glad that we're taking this action tonight, at least I will fully support us taking this action tonight, and then perhaps for another day to talk more about that broader context. And to offer as a prelude to that, the Center for Public Integrity is one of the most nationally recognized and appreciated impartial organizations that studies the integrity, the nature of government operations. I recently put out a report back in November, so not too long ago. Michigan gets an F grade in 2015 State Integrity Investigation, and out of thirteen different attributes, we were Fs on almost all of those, and we were the worst state, the fiftieth state in the nation, in terms of our integrity, operating at the state level. Now, this is looking at the state level, mind you. And then there's scorecard, and there's a series of analysis, and one of the paragraphs says, "The shadowy aspects of Michigan's money-driven politics serve as a key reason why the state rates last among the fifty states," with a grade of F. And then it goes on from there about the data-driven assessment of state government transparency and accountability by the Center for Public Integrity and Global Integrity. And so as I think about this operating context, being the worst state in the nation as far as integrity, this kind of behavior, I would not want this to be expected, but we almost shouldn't be surprised by it. So again, I'll echo our appreciation to the Michigan Municipal League, MLive, and the others who are looking to help shed the light on this kind of activity taking place by our representatives and those from across the state. It's very disturbing.
Councilmember Blanchard?
I'd like to add some, we have a list of people we're going to send this to. I would like to add to that the school board.
Our school?
Our school board. Our school board should know what we're doing, because they have the same concerns, and that's, just we give them a copy. Thank you.
Anybody else? I can't believe the governor will actually sign these bills. And an additional value of this resolution is that it gives him reason to not sign it, that there is general outrage across the state, from every municipality across the state. Every mayor I've talked to is appalled by this. And so by registering our view, I think we offer support for a veto that the governor may want to actually enact. So is there any additional discussion on this item? If there isn't, then I need a motion to move this resolution.
I make the motion to move the resolution.
Support? Moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, and support by Councilmember Terbrack. Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll?
Kadakel?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you all very much. And now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number three?
Motion number M-0116, matter of appointing Mateo Pastalacqua to serve on the Downtown Development Authority Board of Trustees as an at-large member with the term expiring July 2020.
Is there a motion to approve 116?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem Baker?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Edgar. And now, we turn the microphone over to Darceau Strickland-Low.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Michael Levy was a, excuse me, a business member on Coolidge, board member for the DDA, and he recently resigned. In my conversations with, excuse me, Alan Simonian, he expressed an interest in filling that vacancy with Mr. Pastalacqua. I know there's been conversation with him. He's very eager to participate in the City of Berkeley and submitted an application, and in this case, he would be an at-large member.
Very good. Any additional discussion on this appointment? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for helping bring this forward and the due diligence, and ensuring that we have the proper balance across the DDA board. As we know, there's, the seats are allocated across representation from 12 Mile, representation from Coolidge, which constitutes the downtown area, plus an at-large contingent which involves residents and others to be engaged in the process. There's a formula for the seat allocation, and this works within the allocation across the Coolidge representation, 12 Mile representation, and at-large. So I just wanted to help clarify that the board has that proper balance and harmony across the various interests in our downtown community.
Very good. Seeing no additional discussion then on this appointment, Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll on M-116?
Steadman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number four?
Ordinance number 00116, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 78, nuisances of the Berkeley City Code to modify and adopt regulations relating to bird feeders in the city and to prescribe a penalty for violations. Set date certain Monday, February 1st, 2016.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 0116?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadakel?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. And now, we turn to our Assistant City Manager.
Well, the last meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion about this issue, whether or not the right number of bird feeders, the characteristics of the bird feeder equipment itself, and city man, sorry, city attorney. itself. And city man, sorry, city attorney, Mr. Stern, went back and made some revisions to the document that was reviewed at the last meeting, and will give you more insight on what he came up with.
Thank you. Yes, I did make changes. We did have lengthy discussion at the last council meeting about this ordinance. There was no vote taken, but council seemed, at least the majority of council, if not a consensus, seemed to be in favor of a concept and some language that I've attempted to incorporate in this. What I've done is I eliminated some of the troublesome language that we talked about last time, which required an eight-foot separation of bird feeder from basically anything, any structure, or tree, or branch, or anything that a rodent or critter of any kind might be able to climb on. I've eliminated that. I did put the limitation. We kind of talked about how many, how many bird feeders is too many bird feeders, and the number five seemed to be a number, a maximum number that council was comfortable with, so I have inserted that as well. So what you have, if in the current form, is an ordinance that will retain the existing restriction that bird feeders have to be located at least 48 inches above the ground, but would add the requirements that bird feeders shall be designed to be rodent-proof and shall be properly installed with a tray and baffle to prevent spillage on the ground, and, as I just mentioned, a maximum of five would be permitted per property. So that's what's before you tonight.
Good. Any discussion? I know we have discussed this at great length on two prior occasions. Is there general satisfaction with the proposed ordinance? Council?
Mayor Protem? Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, certainly, we've had quite a bit of healthy, informative dialogue on the topic. Just as a small point, I won't oppose the number five. I think I'm more talking about any responsible bird feeding as part of an education program and things like that. But, you know, even one bird feeder installed incorrectly or not properly maintained could lead to all sorts of problems. So I know there was consensus, or many of us wanted to have some kind of a quantity in there, so I won't oppose that, but I think a continued conversation around education and awareness and proper usage of this equipment, I think, would really help a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just following up on Mayor Protem Baker's comments. This is not intended to be an end-all, be-all as far as rodent control in the city. We've received a lot of good input. Ms. Linker provided not only input the last meeting, but subsequent to the meeting, a lot of good ideas. This is one of those situations where it's not necessarily being proposed as a complete solution, but in a, but is just another measure, a step in the direction of rodent control, just like we have requirements now. You know, you can't put your trashcans out too far in advance. You got to keep lids on them. You've got to, you've got to clean up your property, eliminate blight. I mean, there's all sorts of things that all are designed to, among other things, help control rodents, even though no one of those things is necessary, as I said, the total solution. So this is one more step in that direction. Also, as we discussed at the last council meeting, that if the council is inclined to put this in place, it's not etched in stone. We can revisit it. We can add to it. We can modify it. We can repeal it altogether if it's not accomplishing what we're attempting to accomplish here, which is to promote the public health, safety, and welfare.
Good. Anybody else want to weigh in on this? If someone in the audience then wants to weigh in on it?
I would like to weigh in. I read what you had written, and I think it's great. I would suggest that you change the word "and" to "or," designed to be rodent-proof, or shall be properly installed with tray and baffle. And the reason for that is you're ruling out weighted rodent-proof feeders that are highly affected, effective. This is an example I brought. This is the most effective rodent-proof feeder there is. It's based on weight. It closes off the feeding ports to the rodent if the rodent does get on it. So it works well in trees, and it prevents the food from spilling. You cannot put a tray on this feeder. This feeder is also expensive. It's my best-selling feeder, and a lot of people own this feeder. So you'd be forcing them to not use this feeder. If you change the word "and" to "or," it gives them the option to make use of existing and also future rodent-proof opportunities, as well as instructs them that they have to properly install a tray on a feeder that requires a tray and a baffle. Baffles don't work on everything. And really, when I look at 78, 2, 21, and 22, you're pretty clear in there that you can't leave pet food out. And also, excuse me, 20, yeah, 20 and 21, you have to keep your property free of uneaten food. So we kind of cover spillage in those. And then, of course, penalties are, I think it's pretty clear in 78, 3 through the end, that what kind of penalties they can have, 90 days of confinement, $500, or both. So I don't know why we would need to add any additional penalties. But I think that one change in word makes a huge difference. It takes away the hardship it might present to some people and still accomplishes our goal, which is, you know, to prevent nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. May I ask the maker of the motion, Councilmember Kiddekel, is that change acceptable to you?
Very much so.
Okay. And the second, or Councilmember Blanchard?
I have a question or got a comment on that.
Okay.
Would it be appropriate to put "and slash or"?
Yes.
That would cover the "or," don't have to, but if it's not that design, we could say "and have a tray."
And it still needs to be properly installed.
Right. I'm wondering if "and slash or" would give us leeway to do it the right way.
What is the definition of properly installed? A feeder like that, you hang from a tree branch. There's no proper, I think if you leave it to "or," it gives the option. You can buy a rodent-proof feeder, or you can have a non-rodent-proof feeder and make it so. I think if you, when you put "and" in there, you're requiring all of that. That's how I read it.
Well, if you say "and/or," it's either one. As applicable.
I just wonder if "and/or" would give us more leeway as?
I guess I don't know why we need "and," but I'm no attorney.
Well, I'll defer to the attorney and see what he thinks. Throw it to the wall to him.
I tend to agree with the word "or." I think that's appropriate, and I'm also harkening back to numerous English and grammar teachers who have told me over the years, there is no such word as "and/or." So I think "or" works.
Well, being in the future, I'll take that back and say, okay, I'll concur.
You'll concur. Okay. And Councilmember Stedman?
I'd just like to thank you and this whole discussion we've had for the information I've gotten about bird feeders and the rest of the community that's watching.
Yes. I've heard from many people in the community, and although I will be voting for this, I've heard from a lot of people saying 3 is the number we should be voting for. But nonetheless, I'm going to vote for 5, because it seems we can adjust it down the way if we need to.
Correct.
Any additional?
One second.
No additional comment then. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on 00116?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kiddekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, we come to the communications portion of the tonight's meeting, and I forgot who was up first.
Mayor Protem Baker?
Mayor Protem.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick updates this evening for you folks. The Downtown Development Authority DDA meets again next week's Wednesday, and the ramping up preparations for the upcoming budget cycle, stuff to believe that's already on the near horizon here, and so I applaud their continued efforts to help shepherd and steward the progress of our downtown community. And again, to welcome Mateo and the other recent additions to the board as well. It's through their vision and leadership that our downtown will continue to grow and thrive in the years ahead. So I think that's exciting. Also, our historical committee continues its many and varied projects as well. If you guys have had a chance to see the museum recently, you've seen many of the remodeling that they've done in there and moving things around and creating different exhibits and things to spotlight different parts of our community's rich history. And if you haven't been to the museum recently, I'd encourage you to swing by sometime. They're open most Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. No appointment necessary, but we can accommodate appointments as well. If you'd like to have a group come in or a special tour or to do some specific research and things like that, those accommodations can certainly be made as well. So I want to thank them for their continued work to help keep that museum a fresh place for people to come in and see something new every time. And thinking back to the beginning of the year here, fresh beginnings and all that good stuff, it was Mike Dooley, who's a teacher, author, and speaker, who once wrote, "The secret to living the life of your dreams is to start living the life of your dreams today in every little way that you possibly can." And so, when I think about what he's trying to say there, but with "the secret to living the life of your dreams is to start living the life of your dreams today in every little way that you possibly can." When I think about that, it's like those little changes, those little ups that you can do that just help that incremental progress, you know, making one change today, a different change next week, a different change after that. Before you know it, you look back over your shoulder and you see all the tremendous progress that you've made, whether it's at a professional level, personal level, or us here at the community. When we think about the things that we've done and continue to do and strive to do, we're making material progress, right? This, the item that we just talked about with bird feeding, I thought it was a very rich and insightful conversation, informed and fact-based, and it helped us move things forward. To your point, it won't completely eradicate the vermin problem and things like that, but it's an important step forward. And so, I don't think that, you know, bird feeding might be the life of your dreams, and if you do, then you can start living that today as well. So anyway, it's just the thought about, why wait, right? Let's just start taking the actions you can to make this the city of our dreams. And I think we're making great progress every day with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman?
Okay. The library is starting off with some great programs in January. There's a program tomorrow, Tuesday, January 5, at 6:30. If you've got an iPad or any other kind of a device for Christmas, and you want to learn how to use it, then you can sign up for that tomorrow. Wednesday, January 6, at 6:30, they're having an evening mystery book group. The book is "Long Lost" by Harlan Coben. The Afternoon Book Club, Tuesday, January 12, at 12:30, is "Stations Eleven" by Emily St. John Mandell. On Tuesday, January 19, at 6:30, they're having a program about healthy oils and fats, and their culinary uses and flavors and so on, and that sounds really interesting. That's January 19 at 6:30. The Whiskey Chalmers Live Concert, I don't know who the Whiskey Chalmers are, but it is a Detroit-based roots band, and they have stories of the open road, whiskey, chasing a cure for an incurable heartache and so on. And they're coming Tuesday, January 26, at 7 o'clock. And the next family movie at the library will be Saturday, January 16, at 3, and that is Cinderella. Now, the other thing that the library is doing, and they've started it after the first of the year, so it's anytime now, they have sent out a press release about a survey of Berkeley residents and library users to get feedback about the library's services, hours, and more. Like, are the, do you like when the library is open? Would you like it to be open later or earlier or whatever? If you would like to complete that survey, you can stop at the library and pick up a hard copy, or you can go to www.berkley.lib.mish, or MI.us, and you can complete it online. But they're looking for as much feedback as they can. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. At the last meeting, I talked a little bit about safety during the holiday season. Tonight, I'm going to continue that theme a little bit, because we're into the winter, we're into cold weather. I want to talk a little bit about preventing carbon monoxide poisoning. The reason for this is, I don't like to get called out with a fire truck to go investigate either a fire or something like this, so I like to stay home where it's warm. So I'm going to tell you what to do now. Okay, carbon monoxide detectors save lives, but less than one-third of American homes have one installed. With December and January at the peak of CO poisoning, check out, there's fact sheets on this, and these following tips. Replace the battery on your home's CO detector each spring and fall. Do not heat your home with a gas range or an oven. And never run your car, truck, inside attached garage. CO detectors are very reasonably priced. You can get them at Durst. You can get them at most of the big box stores, and they do save lives. So please, if you don't have one, think about getting one to protect your family, and let's hope we don't have any carbon monoxide problems this winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to congratulate and thank the members of the Berkeley Dance Club for all the work that they did yesterday, I believe, putting in AstroTurf and what used to be the studio space to make that a usable space for the dance club program, for our travel teams, and the high school as well. I have not gotten a chance to get over there yet, unfortunately, as it was done yesterday, but I assume from the pictures, it looks fantastic, and we're very excited to have that space be put to great use. So again, just another example of the Dance Club contributing, making something happen, and of course, they pay for it as well. Councilmember Baker mentioned something about not waiting to change. A lot of people wait until January 1 to make a change. It's time to have all those resolutions, and it's actually January 4, which is good, because that means statistically, we haven't failed in our resolutions yet. But by the end of the month, most of us will have failed. Only about, roughly 50% of the population makes New Year's resolutions. We're talking, you know, 160 million people or so, and between 8 and 12% actually make it through the end of the year with that resolution intact. Very difficult, and I am no different. I don't think I have successfully had any resolution make it to the end of the year, and my wife will tell you that last year, I got into February, but she says I cheated. I did not get into March. So if you are going to be making resolutions, just some quick advice, try to make them small, as realistic as possible. And the mayor could talk more about this more eloquently, because there's psychological reasons why we have such trouble maintaining these resolutions. It's an issue of neurons and habit and all kinds of things that I don't want to get into, but I do wish all of you luck, and I wish myself luck as well, because it's difficult to make changes. It's very difficult, something that we have to focus on every single day, trying to get better, trying to focus our, it's a mental approach as much as anything else. And it's what we try to do here in the city, all departments of the city, always trying to do our best and make what we feel is in the best interest of the residents. And talking about interests of the residents, today, as January 4 is the deadline for city manager applications to be in. So I would expect, over the next few weeks, we will have a number of candidates that we are going to be in conjunction with the MML, who's again helping us with the search and the search committee, looking over, reviewing, and trying to make decisions, again, that we feel is in the best interest for the City of Berkeley. Again, that doesn't mean that the process is going to be resolved necessarily quickly, because it's something that takes time. And we want to have the residents, as I mentioned last year, involved in this, and we still plan on having the residents very involved in this process. But we are one step closer, and I wanted to make sure that all the residents were aware that today was the deadline, so we are continuing to make progress, albeit small. We are making progress. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing much tonight. I just wanted to wish everyone a very Happy New Year.
I just wanted to wish everyone a very Happy New Year, and I think we should all resolve to be kinder to one another.
Thank you. Councilmember Kedekle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Luanne again for coming out here tonight. Steve, I know she dragged you along, but, you know, your input was helpful, and I want to thank you for being at the meetings, and hopefully you'll spread the word to your constituents or your patrons, patrons, patrons. There are two positions open on the Zoning Board of Appeals for alternates. If you're interested, please contact City Hall, let Annette know, our city clerk, and hopefully we can fill those positions soon. The Seventh Annual Off to the Races from the Berkeley Education Foundation, it's a fun event, will be held on February 6th at 6:30 PM at the Great Lakes Culinary Center at 24101 Nine Mile Road. I think it's like 9 and Telegraph. If you haven't been to this event, I recommend you go. It's a lot of fun. It's simulated horse racing. And next week, to my Mayor Pro Tem, our Mayor Pro Tem, happy birthday. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now to our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Low.
Well, I just want to thank you all again for the opportunity to serve the residents of Berkeley, and wish all of you a very Happy New Year, and the same to the residents. May 2016 be like the greatest year ever.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just like to take the opportunity to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Attorney?
I share Mr. Sabuda's sentiments, and Happy New Year, everybody, and that's my comment for this evening.
Thank you. Well, I was having a wonderfully Happy New Year so far, until the Mayor Pro Tem informed us tonight that Michigan is the last amongst the states of the United States of America in integrity politicians. That is a horrendous indictment of how we have moved over the period, the last number of years. And so, I'm encouraged by the passion to push back from all of the communities across the state to say, "Look, enough is enough. We need people to fix the roads and do the right thing and quit disenfranchising the people." So, hopefully, the governor will do the right thing and veto bills that actually diminish the voice of the people. And I think he will. I'm still optimistic that he will do the right thing. He just needs sufficient support to do what is necessary. And so, we may return again to a Happy New Year, keeping integrity as a fundamental measure of who we are as people. And so, with that thought, Ms. Souchere, is there a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn by Counselor Kedekle.
Support.
Support by Counselor Stedman. Ms. Souchere, would you please call the roll?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kedekle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. January 4th, 2016, council meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, that's almost record.